Good evening, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I am Shannon Hardin and I'd like to call this meeting of the Rules and Reference Committee to order. This evening, I'll be presiding over this evening's committee. We will be discussing Ordinance 1079-2016, which if passed would create a new Department of Neighborhoods in the administration. Please be aware that this evening's hearing is being broadcast on CTV Columbus Government Television Channel. I would like to acknowledge my colleagues who are here, Councilmember Mike Stenziano, who is co-sponsor of this ordinance, and Councilmember Jaisa Page. I'm very excited about this evening's hearing because it represents renewed focus on our neighborhoods, the many communities and the residents that come together to make us America's opportunity city. We will hear from Ms. Pam O'Grady, Senior Advisor to the Mayor, who has been integral in creating this new department, what it will look like, which functions will be included in the new department, and many other functions. Thank you, Mrs. O'Grady. Following Ms. O'Grady, we will hear from the Community Relations Commission Director Derrick Anderson, Deputy Development Director Hannah Jones, Assistant Public Service Director Mike Sexton, Ms. Lois Bruce, who coordinates our 311 Department, which will all speak about the specific functions that will be incorporated in this new department. After presentations and questions from members, we will make the public speaker, we will take public speakers on the ordinance under consideration. Because of the rules of council, I would like to be respectful of everyone's time and be clear that if I feel that comments are veering off-topic of Ordinance 109-2016, that I will ask speakers to redirect their comments and then ask speakers to be seated. If anyone wishing to speak, please see Ed Johnson or Ms. Copel Bianco. We're going to, when we sent out the notification, we said we would take speaker slips till 5:00. We'll extend that for a few more minutes until 5:15 if folks would like to speak. This is a new, this is a new time in our city and is really exciting undertaking a new, undertaking the creation of a new department that is focused specifically on neighborhoods. And so, I would like to turn the floor over to Pam O'Grady, who will talk about the department, how we got here, and kind of give us a 30,000-foot view of this new department. Ms. O'Grady.
Councilmember Hardin, Councilmember Stenziano, Councilmember Page, thank you for giving the administration the opportunity to present Ordinance 1079-2016 for your consideration. This ordinance, creating the Department of Neighborhoods, comes from Mayor Ginther's vision to continue building the city's focus on neighborhoods. One of the first things Mayor Ginther did when he took office was to hold a series of neighborhood family reunions to hear directly from the community. He gave out comment cards so people could write in their suggestions and we listened to what they had to say. Overwhelmingly, what we heard was that our residents want a one-stop-shop, they shouldn't have to go from one department to another to get answers. We also know that they need to be able to hold us accountable. We want our residents to know that we are here for them and that we want to spotlight our abilities to problem-solve. We want to make our current city services more efficient and accountable and put neighborhoods first. To that end, this department will bring different areas of the city under one roof. The Community Relations Commission, 311, Neighborhood Liaisons, and Neighborhood Pride all will now serve one director, one chain of command. The Pride Centers will maintain their current staff and locations while all other staff will move into one location in a neighborhood, hopefully by the end of the year. Councilmembers Director Anderson, Deputy Director Jones, and Assistant Director Sexton are all here to discuss each of their departments' areas that will be folded into the Neighborhoods Department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Grady. Do any of my colleagues have any questions after Ms. O'Grady at this point? Well, then, we'll keep on going. And I think next up, we have Ms. Hannah Jones, Assistant Director of Department of Development, which will talk about their portion of the New Neighborhoods Department.
Good evening, Councilmember Hardin, Councilmember Page, and Councilmember Stenziano. Thank you for your time this afternoon. The Office of Neighborhood Services represents the Neighborhood Pride Program and the Neighborhood Liaisons, who serve as the constituent outreach and engagement arm of our department and will be transitioning to the new department. The Neighborhood Liaisons are a team of advocates created to work across department lines to get results for citizen requests, problems, and questions. The liaisons are responsible for coordinating the exchange of information among citizens, neighborhood organizations, and city staff, and providing technical assistance and serving as an advocate on neighborhood issues. Each liaison serves several area commissions, civic associations, and the surrounding areas which may not be covered by one of those organizations. In this role, staff work to assist the residents with any issue in order to ensure a better delivery of city services. The liaisons manage our Neighborhood Pride Centers, which are placed strategically around the city. The centers are open to the public and residents are encouraged to come to the office to ask questions, receive help, and talk with city representatives. Our Neighborhood Pride Program strengthens community activism, builds stronger neighborhood-city relationships, and empowers neighborhoods and businesses to work with the city to improve their community. Since its inception in 2000, the program has served 72 areas throughout the city. Participating neighborhoods work with our staff to identify needed city services and issues that are addressed during what we call Pride Week. Community-wide cleanups are organized, a Neighborhood Safety Academy is held, and Beautiful Home Awards are issued. The week culminates with a community night, which is hosted by the mayor and his cabinet and offers residents an opportunity to ask questions directly to city leadership. In addition to the four to five neighborhood-specific Pride Weeks that are held around the city annually, the Neighborhood Pride staff participate in festivals and events throughout the city with our Mobile City Hall, which serves as a Pride Center on Wheels, so to speak. They support bicycle safety by hosting bicycle safety festivals at elementary schools and providing bike helmets and bicycles to residents, as well as our nonprofit partners. Finally, they host an annual talent search for the middle school students from around the city of Columbus. As part of student selection for participation, they are given an opportunity to perform in the talent show that takes place at the Neighborhood Pride Holiday Gathering, which has turned into quite a large event and has many of our elected officials who participate and even dance on a good night. Additionally, the students are required to commit community service hours in their neighborhood as part of this program. These program and the staff that support them have served and will continue to serve as excellent advocates and community builders for our residents. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Deputy Director, as we are bringing these new, these functions that have traditionally been housed in development to the New Neighborhoods Department, talk about the physical locations. Will they change? How will, how will residents interact with their liaisons? Any differently are these services still being provided in the neighborhoods directly?
So, the Pride Centers will remain as they are, and it is every intention to keep the liaisons in them. We see them as being integral parts of our community and, for example, with the new REB Center, Joanne, I'm sure anyone on this side of the room will tell you, is, you know, an integral part of that community. So, we do not want to break that fabric at all. If anything, the hope is that what we're doing is streamlining the communication for the liaisons, that now they have an advocate all the way through the cabinet level who can really make sure that our liaisons are getting to the right individuals within the city structure to answer those questions faster.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for Director Jones? Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Director of the Community Relations Commission, Director Derrick Anderson, on his department's role with the New Neighborhoods Department.
Thank you so much, Councilman Hardin, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Stenziano. The Community Relations Commission, of course, chartered in 1990 as, I would consider, a mighty team in the city of Columbus. It's a small office in terms of staff personnel, but certainly does a mighty work for the city. There are four, really, pillars of the Community Relations Commission. One is diversity and cultural competence training. We do that with city, within the city organizational structure and then without, in terms of various organizations, corporations that invite us in to facilitate that type of training. We do community engagement where we interact with a lot of our communities and neighborhoods throughout the city of Columbus, especially in relations to police and community relations work. We are fortunate to have the New Americans Initiative, having a direct linkage to our refugee and immigrant populations here in the city. And as those populations begin, continue to increase, it is nice to have a centralized location for those communities to interact with the city. And then, of course, perhaps one of the hallmarks of the office is the enforcement of the City of Columbus Civil Rights Code. And that, of course, provides protection in both housing and employment and really discrimination in all forms, but it provides, thanks to you all's work as councilmembers, the greatest level of protection for our members of the LGBT community. The Columbus Civil Rights Code provides the most protection of anywhere in the state, really, for that population. And we're very fortunate that we have the responsibility for upholding and the enforcement of that Civil Rights Code. Since my arrival in the office in February, we have taken the mayor's directive to really become an office that is applicable and reaches out to all of our neighborhoods. So, at his urging and consultation, we've been able to take CRC into the neighborhood in preparation for this ordinance, where we have visited initially in the Franklinton area, we've gone to the South Side, the Linden, and then we just completed a global tour, making sure that our connections were there and really taking our office as a really precursor to this creation of the Department of Neighborhoods, to kind of put the legs in motion to make our office even more relevant to those neighborhoods. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have in reference to CRC.
Director, one question that I've received, your department is the one department that will become, you know, fully into this new department. How do you see that adding to, how do you see becoming part of this Neighborhoods Department, bringing greater value to the work that you do as it pertains to the LGBT, to the New Americans population? And how do you, how will you, how will this new department use the great work that the commission has done in the past to greater, elevate that platform of the work?
Well, I think, thank you so much, Councilman Hardin, for the question. I believe that moving our entire office into this group is going to elevate because, as I started off by saying, we're a small, we're a group of eight that has the responsibility for the entire city. Having the ability to work hand-in-hand with our Neighborhood Liaisons, our Neighborhood Pride Centers, will allow our, our staff to really be able to really permeate into the neighborhoods, because it is, it is somewhat difficult to be at 1111 East Broad Street away from a quote-unquote neighborhood. But now, we have the tentacles ability to be able to go into neighborhoods, we'll have the additional resources of personnel that can help us when there's a problem, people that were right there on, on the ground that can, can also help us respond faster, can hear of issues. So, I see it as a further enhancement, because that eight now becomes an additional group of people. And with those numbers, with effective leadership, we'll be able to respond a whole lot faster.
Thank you, Director. Councilmembers, do you have any question? Well, then, we'll move on to 311 and Public Services' role in this new Department of Neighborhoods.
Councilmember Hardin, members of council, thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight about the 311 Service Center. The mission of the 311 Service Center is to be the single point of contact for residents of Columbus to submit a request for non-emergency city services. The current 311 Service Center staffing includes one 311 manager, Lois Bruce, who is with us here this evening, one 311 supervisor, three 311 Service Representative Twos, who are lead reps, seventeen 311 Service Representative Ones, two are bilingual in Spanish, and two part-time service representatives. Our hours of operation are 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Residents are able to submit service requests 24/7 online and via the mobile app, and they can leave voicemails and submit email requests after hours. Currently, we are exploring the possibility of implementing a new customer relationship management system to replace our current system. We have been meeting with our technology department and have completed a survey of our internal 311 city personnel and are awaiting the results. In addition, we are surveying 35 cities and counties to gather information about their 311 systems and how they provide customer service. Our goal is to make our new 311 CRM system more customer-friendly and accessible to our residents. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Lois Bruce, our 311 manager, who is gonna talk about our customer contact channels and relationship with our departments.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Councilmember Hardin, Councilmember Stenziano, and Councilmember Page. In 2015, the 311 Service Center processed over 338,000 total contacts. Residents are able to contact 311 a number of ways, excuse me. In 2015, calling 311 was the most utilized and popular contact channel, and that accounted for 75% of all of our contacts. Residents initiated requests via the online portal, which accounted for 19% of all contacts. Our email channel accounted for 4% of all contacts, submissions via the mobile app accounted for approximately 2%, and voicemails accounted for less than 1%. 311 serves nearly all city agencies in some capacity. For instance, the Department of Public Service accounted for nearly 79% of all of our service requests created last year. The Department of Development received about 12% of all of the requests, most of which went to code enforcement. Requests for public safety accounted for 3.5%. Public utilities accounted for around 2.5%, and recreation and parks accounted for 2%. All other departments were less than 1% combined. The top 10 service requests by volume traditionally have been bulk pickup, trash and recycling container repair or replacement, potholes, high grass and weeds, abandoned vehicles, missed recycling or yardway services, missed trash service, streetlight repair, street tree maintenance request, and public sidewalk damage. Out of our 338,000 total contacts last year, 33% did not result in the creation of a service request. So, 311 fills inquiries for various topics, for example, the addresses and phone numbers for other agencies, general information about various city programs, questions about the permit process, immunization information, how to get birth and death certificates, the list goes on. 311 call volume trending. The volume of incoming calls received has increased, on average, 5.7% every year since 2012. So, it is increasing, even though there's mobile app and other ways to submit service requests, residents still like to just pick up the phone and call us. So, we're averaging 5.5% to 6% growth every year. Thank you, everyone, and we'll try to answer questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. This question could be to Public Service and 311 Center or to Director O'Grady. Can you speak to the mayor's vision for how this department will interface with other departments who are not necessarily a part of this new Neighborhoods Department, but still interface with the, the public per se, public utilities or police that still have interactions with, but maybe are now, you know, in, in this new department?
Sure. Thanks, Councilmember Hardin. How the mayor envisions this is that it's, it's a one-stop-shop, and it is at the cabinet level. So, if, if neighborhood residents or any constituency feels like their concern isn't getting addressed, obviously, they can come to the Neighborhoods Department and hopefully get their concern addressed quicker, because they've got it, it's at a cabinet-level position now. So, if there's a pothole that's not being filled or anything like that, you know, being at cabinet weekly when we meet, that director is then able to say, hey, by the way, this hasn't been addressed.
Thank you. Can you speak to the timeline of, of how we roll this out and how we will continue to get the word out about this new department and how residents can interface with the department?
Sure. Thanks, Councilmember. Right now, the timeline is that this will be effective July 3rd. That's how the ordinance is drafted right now, pending you all's approval. We would like, we won't have a location probably by then, but we encourage everyone to continue contacting their liaisons and 311 as they are now, but we will be moving. So, at that point, we will do an extensive campaign to make sure the neighborhoods know, the residents know where they can go and get their questions answered.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any, Councilmember Stenziano?
Thank you, Chairman Hardin, and just wanted to make a quick statement. Really applaud the mayor's vision and listening. You know, I heard from you all, one-stop-shop, streamlining, respond faster, more customer-friendly and accessible. I think those are all things that we, as councilmembers, value, and I know this administration and your leadership value as well. And so, I'm really excited by this rollout and this opportunity to truly streamline, provide best, better customer service, and I think it's a very exciting initiative. So, just want to thank you all. I know in-cabinet, you've really been looking under or through every corner in terms of how can we make this the most effective department, and I'm really excited by what you've presented today and look forward to working with you and the chair of the committee in the future. So, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano, and certainly want to echo a sincere appreciation for the mayor's vision for providing Neighborhood Services, Community Services. This is why we are all here. And add to that, a thank you to the community, who, by, evidenced by their participation in this hearing today, shows their commitment to working together to improve all of our neighborhoods. So, really want to say thank you to the folks who came out today to hear about the department, to ask questions. And with that, we'll move into the public comment portion of tonight's hearing. Comments, again, should be germane to this ordinance 1079-2016. We'll do our best to answer any questions. I apologize, before we do that, we will, Councilmember Page.
Thank you, Chair Hardin, and many thanks to you and Councilmember Stenziano for co-sponsoring this ordinance. I might have a few questions, I don't know who can answer, but just jump in. It's my understanding that the CRC is the only department or under, that will be joined in the Neighborhood Services that has its own commission, own codified commission. So, how will the commissioners kind of integrate into this new department, and if so, what will be their role?
Councilmember Page, what the mayor envisions is that the Community Relations Commission still exists as a commission, and that it works, as Director Anderson said, works hand-in-hand with the rest of the Neighborhoods Department to make sure all of our communities' concerns are addressed.
Okay, so, this may be kind of like a lawyer term, it's more like a merger rather than an acquisition.
Correct.
It sounds good. And then, another question for 311, you said that 1% of the calls goes for the other departments that you didn't list. Does that also include CRC as well?
Um, yes. I turned it off. Yes, CRC, that includes.
Those are my only questions. Thank you, Chair Hardin.
Thank you, Councilmember Page, and feel free, councilmembers, to jump in as community members have questions for us or, or comments in between those comments. As we, as I call speakers up, just remember that, to state your name and the organization that you may represent, we have several speakers, so we are gonna stick to the strict three-minute timeframe and ask, again, that you stick to your comments and questions to this ordinance and the New Neighborhoods Department. First, I would like to call up Mr. Bill Wood. Welcome, Mr. Wood.
Councilmember Hardin, my name is Bill Wood. I live at 41 West Second Avenue in the short north. And Councilmember Hardin, Stenziano, and Page, I feel like it's the dawn of a new day in the city of Columbus, that the government has, with Andy Ginther and you three council people, who I've had close contact with over the last year, we've, we've had meetings with you in our houses. You have showed concern and interest in what we're trying to do in the short north as far as retaining the character and the ambiance of the short north, and that you have taken your time and your energy to come to us is awesome, and that you are making this a neighborhood thing, which, where other people who are trying to form the same kind of committees or the same kind of organizations can get together, excuse me, and form their own groups. It's wonderful that you're doing this. Councilmember Hardin, Stenziano, and Page were all in our house. Through their guidance and their insight, it took us 13 months, but we were able to form a group that made a difference in the short north, and without their input, it would not have happened. So, I want to applaud the resolution that you have started and hope that in the future, it can blossom into something where every individual neighborhood has its own group that they have formed, so that they can fight for the causes in their neighborhood that need to be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wood. Councilmembers, do you have any question or comments? Thank you, Mr. Wood. And we were there by invitation. This is not an example of government overreaching and going into homes. We were invited, now. Next, we have Mr. Ryan Edwards.
Good evening. Thank you, Councilmember Hardin, Councilmember Stenziano, and Councilmember Page. I'm Ryan Edwards. I'm the Senior Impact Director of Neighborhoods and lead the Neighborhood Partnership Center at United Way of Central Ohio. On behalf of United Way, we are extremely excited to be here this evening to celebrate the launch, the launch, the near-launch of the City of Columbus Department of Neighborhoods. As you know, our United Way has a long history of supporting programs and activities that positively impact Columbus neighborhoods. We believe that supporting our neighborhoods and the folks who live in them are paramount to the overall health and vitality of this community. The creation of this department shows the continued commitment from the City of Columbus leadership to make sure opportunities to thrive are available to all who reside in our city. At United Way of Central Ohio, we too are in the process of making renewed commitment to improvement of neighborhoods in this community. Much of what has been mentioned tonight is in direct alignment with our own organizational goals and objectives as relates to advancement in neighborhoods. We hope that you continue to think of us as partners as we collectively seek solutions to lift up the communities we serve. Tonight, I want to specifically point out the resources available through the Neighborhood Partnership Center at United Way of Central Ohio. Through that work, we offer resident capacity building and trainings aimed at arming civic groups and community-focused individuals with the skills and tools to drive action in their community. We administer the Neighborhood Partnership Grants Program that provides grants up to $10,000 to folks in neighborhoods looking to drive projects, resident-driven projects to improve communities. It's a program that's been supported by the City of Columbus for the past several years, and we thank you for that. We co-design and co-lead the Neighborhood Best Practices Conference with the City of Columbus Community Relations Commission. It's a day each year where neighborhood advocates come together to share the great things that are happening in their own communities. And finally, we're currently in the process of preparing for our fifth cohort of the Neighborhood Leadership Academy, a nine-month leadership program designed to strengthen the ability of existing and emerging leaders to drive positive action in a place they call home. I see a few of, a few of our graduates in the stands tonight. Please consider these resources as supporting activities to the work the city will lead in this new department. We're happy to be helpful in any way that we can. If there's interest in learning more about our work, please contact myself at ryan.edwards@uwcentralohio.org or 614-227-2703. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Any questions, comments? Thank you so much. Just a question to our, our directors, we are going to continue with the Neighborhoods Best Practice Conference. That is a question, not a comment, but.
Yes, sir, Councilman Hardin, it is our plan to have it this year.
Thank you, thank you. And Director O'Grady, just a question about the structure of the committee, the, the department. What is our staff, what would it look like total in terms of budget and how we will pull this together, just on the structural side? And this question of, this is the beginning, and do we have aspirations to see this grow as we get the ball rolling?
Councilmember Hardin, right now, we are just going to be realigning current resources that we have, so we'll just be moving. that we have, so we'll just be moving the current staffing. Obviously, we'll be adding a director to oversee the department, but short-term, we're not going to be adding anyone. Long-term, there may be some folks that we need to add, but right now, we're just realigning what we have.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins.
Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, welcome. 1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. the chairman of Sullivan, probably Northland here. I just want to say thank you, but I want to know the operations of the time, Monday to Friday and also on the weekends, if you can explain that. Thank you for your time.
Director O'Grady, would you speak to how folks will engage with the different pieces? I know that we have the Neighborhood Liaisons, which will stay in their locations and will be available as they are now, and as we get to a new location in the future, we'll be rolling out new times of how folks can engage at that new location, but could you speak a little to that?
Absolutely. Right now, our pride centers are available from 9 to 5, and that will continue. Once we're in a new location, we'll make sure to let people know if anything changes.
Thank you, Director. Next, we'll have Ms. Chris Cozad.
Councilmember Harden, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Senziano, thank you for giving me this opportunity. I have served on the Columbus Community Relations Commission for 15 years. I've been a leader in the LGBT community for something akin to 35 years, and I'm here tonight because I have some concerns about the new Neighborhood Department and how it will be implemented. And I want to say, I don't have a problem with the reorganization. I think that that's a separate issue. For me, however, neighborhood implies a geographic connection, a shared locality. We have many wonderful neighborhoods in Columbus, and I appreciate that the mayor and the city is committed to improving those neighborhoods. But there are marginalized communities that are not included by the term neighborhood, and they're not defined by geography. The LGBT community, my community, is one that comes to mind, but there are many others, religious communities, the larger, obvious, the Jewish community, the Muslim community, but especially some of our smaller religious communities, the Sikh community, the Jain community. Those communities are not defined by a geographic boundary. The disability community is another one that comes to mind, veterans, yet another. The Community Relations Commission is charged with enforcing the city's Civil Rights Code, and that involves the investigation of discrimination. The majority of our protected classes in Columbus don't fall into specific neighborhoods, and the kinds of discrimination that we investigate are life-changing. These are, this is a very serious responsibility. People lose their jobs, their homes, and that can have dire consequences. So my concerns are really twofold. One in particular, specific to the LGBT community, is that that protection, as Director Anderson mentioned earlier, is the only protection afforded to LGBTQ folks right now in Columbus. There's no state protection, there's no federal protection. It's perfectly legal to fire someone because they're gay, not in the city of Columbus. So that protection's really, really important to my community. And my other concern is about language, and this is really the larger concern. By calling the new department the Department of Neighborhoods, you are sending an indirect message to non-geographic communities that they are less important, less valuable, and well, you may, you may not be included. And that is not, I think, something that's going to be valuable to the city of Columbus. Columbus has always prided ourselves on our inclusivity and our diversity, and that commitment to serving all of those communities is part of what makes us great. So I'm concerned about the ambiguity of the name, and I would ask that you to consider a more inclusive and expansive name for the department than the Department of Neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chris. And first, I want to thank you for the work that you've done for all of our communities in, over the years, and I think that you spoke to that work, and I think that one thing that we are sure about is that those services, those protections, that work is continuing as part of this department, raising the platform in which that we can talk about these important issues and the diversity of our different neighborhoods and our communities. And so directors, I don't know which director would like to respond. I think it's a fair point, though, and I appreciate the comment.
Councilmember Harden, absolutely, we want the Neighborhoods Department to be inclusive of all, all residents of the city of Columbus, and that was the mayor's vision. We're happy to entertain Commissioner Cozad's comments and entertain a change.
And Commissioner Harden, if I may add, in terms of the investigation process, we intend fully to execute that as part of our responsibilities in the new department.
Thank you. No question from my colleagues. Next, we will have Ms. Maude Grace.
I'm Maude Grace, and I'm representing Deschler Park Civic. Thank you, Councilman Harding, Councilwoman Senziano, and Councilwoman Jaisa. My, I understand what she means because to me, the neighborhoods doesn't make me feel So I'm not sure what the answer is. I was sitting back there talking to one of the other gentlemen, and I was thinking of maybe if you would add, "and communities." I don't know. I just know that it doesn't sound quite whatever. Anyway, my, I would like to really give a lot of thanks to Mike and to Jaisa because anytime that I email city council about issues, I normally get a response. So I'm very appreciative to you two for helping with neighborhood issues. I would like to see a little better response with the 311 calls that I put in, and I did talk to Lois, I think, the first of the week, the first of the week, about some of the issues that I had called in that never got any type of response. And there's, the Department of Relations, I normally work with Gail Gray, and I get great responses from her. So in overall, I'm looking forward to this new department, but I think that we still have quite a ways to go. Have a good day.
Thank you. Councilmember Senziano.
Ms. Grace, I appreciate yours and everyone's comment, and to your point, I think we all agree that this is beginning of a new department, that we are very open to residents, communities, and neighborhoods' feedback on what we can continue to do better. I know I've talked with 311 about concerns that I hear, and they've been responsive, and that's where I think we are truly committed to providing better customer service, and so that's what I'm excited about, not only this council's commitment, but the mayor's administration, the cabinet's commitment to everyone in the city of Columbus. So some of those frustrations, not only this department, but I think everyone at the city is committed to making sure that we're able to address those better, quicker, and so that we can worry about other things.
Okay.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Next, we have Mr. Terrell Mock. Mr. Terrell Mock.
Terrell Mock from the Minority Independent Contractors Alliance, 1452 East Livingston Avenue. Appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you, especially as far as neighborhoods is concerned. I heard you guys speak a lot about one-stop centralized location, and that appeals to me because MICA is just the same thing. We're a one-stop shop for minority, independent, local, economically disadvantaged contractors. So they both, the prime contractors, the subcontractors, and also do youth training for life skills. Columbus State, I just graduated, a group from Columbus State. But my main question would be, how does this change from communication from civics commissions to liaisons, those three people? How does this new department streamline or improve that communication so we can go direct and get some of those immediate answers? So that would probably be the biggest concern of my constituents that I deal with.
Thank you, Mr. Mock. Director, Deputy Director Jones, you can stay upstairs.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. I think that the answer in the short term, clearly, once the new director is on board and everybody is together, there'll probably be some conversation about what exactly that looks like. To Councilmember Senziano's point, the input of our residents and our communities are going to be important in determining that. But in the most direct fashion, I would say that now you are not going in between departments as much as my liaisons will be able to get to Lois directly, right? So we are removing some barriers in that there is closer communication now within a single department and a single location where you can walk down the hallway and say, hey, I just hung up with so-and-so, and this is the concern we're hearing. So I think that's the most immediate reality, but clearly, we'll need your input going forward as the director comes on board to really figure out what streamlined is.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mock. That was our last public speaker forum that we have, and so I just want to say a few words of appreciation to Mayor Ginther for this vision of providing direct neighborhood services, continued neighborhood services. The neat part about new beginnings or starts are that we all get to be part of molding what it actually turns out to be, and so that's what this is, this conversation this evening, this public hearing was the beginning of us molding what this new department will be and how it will touch each one of our citizens in our neighborhoods and our communities. And so I'm excited to be a part of this. I am certainly excited to work with my colleagues on council to make sure that our citizens are receiving the best services that we can possibly provide. Certainly want to thank Director O'Grady for her hours and hours and hours she put into help bringing this vision to at this point, Director, Assistant Director Jones, Director Anderson, Director Sexton, and Ms. Lois Bruce for the work that you guys do every day. One of the things that we heard today was that these services are being provided each day already. We are just raising the platform from which they can now be discussed, be talked about, but these services are being provided by our city employees, by our folks, day in and day out, and so want to take a, send a special thank you, especially to the 311 call center folks who answer the phone calls. They certainly are the first line. If we're not getting the calls in our offices, folks are calling 311 and hearing the concerns of our neighborhoods. So please take that back to them, that we greatly appreciate them, that this is a step in the direction, another step in us doubling down on our investment in the work that they do because the residents need this type of engagement and appreciate it. I certainly want to thank my co-sponsor, Mike Senziano, who will be working really directly with this 311 portion to make sure that we even grow and add on to the services that we provide there. Certainly want to thank my colleague, Jaisa Page, for her many hours that she spends out in the community and her work that she does in making sure that all of our services, all of our citizens are being touched by city council. Want to thank our staff at city council for working to put this hearing on, for their work, my staff, Ms. Linda Capobianco. Certainly want to thank the folks who run CTV. Again, this will be, this was aired this evening, but will also be available on columbus.gov. And I want to thank you guys, the community, for coming out. Like I said, this is the beginning, not the middle or the end, so we still want to hear input. We want to have your help in molding what this department will become. There are still things that we want to add to it, to grow, and to continue to provide this work. Thank you so much, and with that, we will adjourn this Rules and Reference Committee.